Okay, very good. So, let me start again. Good afternoon and welcome to the City of Leon Valley City Council Regular Meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 17th, 2019. It's approximately 6:17 this evening. And we are calling this meeting to order. We have a quorum. All council members are present. And if you'll please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. Before we begin on our presentations, just a few housekeeping considerations. Please silence your phones. That would be wonderful if you would do that. And again, if you need to speak during the council meeting to your neighbor, if you'll please step outside into the outside foyer so that we don't hear you or get disrupted here on the dais, we'd greatly appreciate that. On Citizens Be Heard, we do still have up to five minutes this evening for your comments and three minutes on every other agenda item. We have an agenda item on the rules of decorum and that may change, so I just wanted to ask you that. And then also, if I could ask the councillors to please raise your hand or get my attention before you speak, so I can recognize you to flow the discussion up here at the dais. I greatly appreciate that. So, thank you. All right. So, we'll begin with Presentations Number Two. Presentation of the City of Leon Valley Park Commissioner's Annual Report. Chairman Roger, there he is. Christensen is here. Hello, Mr. Christensen and Chairman of the Park Commission. And we appreciate you being here and thank you for your presentation. Thank you. No, it's not on for some reason. Thank you.
Can everybody hear me? Are we okay with the microphone in the position that it currently is?
There we go.
Mayor, Staff, City Council, good evening. And thank you for inviting me to discuss recent activities of the Leon Valley Park Commission. I don't intend to read the report word for word, but to review our activities and accomplishments. We have nine regular and two alternate members. One alternate position is currently open. Our regular meeting is a second Tuesday at 6:30 PM at the Leon Valley Conference Center. Our agenda includes the opportunity for citizens to be heard, just like council. We patterned that agenda item off our experiences here at City Council. Our agendas are posted at City Hall and online. We also schedule meetings at parks to get hands-on information. Let me digress for just a moment and report to you that our parks are in good condition. Outside of a very few maintenance items and updates, I consider them to be in very good condition. The purpose of the Park Commission is to update the council on activities and to inform and talk about future activities of the Park Commission. We were authorized by city ordinance. We prepare and submit park recommendations to city council for consideration and adoption. This year, we welcome new members, Chris Erickson, Camino, Michelle Elizondo, Joyce Trent, and Captain Jack Dean. We oversaw the continued development of Old Mill, The Ridge, Leon Valley Parks, installing new playgrounds, outdoor fitness equipment, and others. We continued with revisions to the parks' trails and master plan open space. I believe we have an opportunity to present that to city council next month. I'm a little bit hesitant because the group hasn't actually seen the final plan and you just never know what the vote's going to be like, but we're optimistic. Could I have the next one? Being outdoors and experiencing nature just gives us a sense of well-being that can't be put into words. We surveyed and collected returns from the Park Master Plan. And I want to report to you that we received a whopping 17% response, which is absolutely huge for this type of event. We recommended the approval of variance requests for the Leon Valley Historical Society and the Alamo City Hobby Shop. One of the main activities of the park in the summer is the Fourth of July Celebration. Since that is a city-sponsored event, it does not require a variance. Now, please join me in a walk in the park. Could I have? On the screen, we're looking at the Old Mill Park Pavilion, which was installed, the trail completed, and handicap parking installed. The playground, the picture on the lower right, is The Ridge at Leon Valley. And I also want to report that shortly after this playground was installed, I observed children from the neighborhood, black, white, brown, and they were all playing together. I just think it's great that we can leave these differences at the edge of the park and just enjoy each other's companies. The upper left is the playground at The Ridge at Leon Valley, currently under construction, the pavilion and path at the same park. Even though I generally mentioned that we meet at the conference center, we're scheduling our October meeting here at that park in that pavilion. We have the Little Free Library in all our parks, including The Ridge at Leon Valley, the pavilion at St. Drew and Solar Silo. Our next steps will include the development of the Harrington and Linkwood Trails. And we continue to support the desires of city council for a robust recreational system and encouraging more people to enjoy the outdoors. At this time, I want to issue, I want to say, a special thank you for city council's support of our park system. We're looking at installing shade covers at Remkus and other parks, the improvement of the Peach Tree Lot at POS, building a rain garden at Remkus, a new pavilion, and outdoor fitness equipment, and talking about the Linkwood Trail. I would like to acknowledge, I think the final slide, please. I would like to acknowledge the service of other park commissioners, including Diane Bolton, Carolyn Gabriel, Kathy Hill, David Smith, Geraldine Rodriguez Smith, Jack Dean, Michelle Elizondo, Chris Erickson Canto, and our alternate Joyce Trent. Let me conclude my remarks with special recognition to Public Works Director Melinda Moritz and her staff for their efforts in maintaining and improving our Leon Valley Parks. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much. Just a few questions and I'll open it up to my colleagues as well. The copy of the park survey, is that online? Because I did not see that and I'd love to read it. So, if you could just direct me, then I can, and anyone else that would like to look at the park survey as well?
I believe it is online.
Okay.
It should be under Public Works and Parks.
Okay.
It's also in the Park Master Plan that we will be bringing to council.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Now, where will the Elverde Pocket Park be located? I was not familiar with that.
There is, you know where the construction trailer is on Elverde Road, right next to the fire station?
Right.
It's those lots right in there. So, it's about 1.81 acres next to the fire station.
All right. Thank you. And the Linkwood Trails, where is that? Is that, I'm assuming it's in Linkwood, but where?
Actually, it's at the end, you know where the cul-de-sac is on Evers Road, right next to Pavona Place?
Oh, yeah.
In St. John's Church?
Oh, that little.
There's a 30-foot right-of-way that goes through there and then it elbows back and then ends up linking up to Linkwood.
Okay. So, that's where that is. And the new pavilion at the Raymond Remkus Park for the rain garden, was that part of that whole overall plan to have a pavilion there? Okay. And, oh, I can't read my writing. 8/29/19? Oh, well. Need budget statement. Oh, no, that's okay. That's something else. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you for that. And I tell you, it's a quality of life issue, I think, for me and for all of our citizens to be able to get out in nature and walk. And it's just improves, you know, our whole well-being. And so, when we think about where we've been and how far we've come, especially with all the Pocket Parks and more to come, the Park Commission's done an outstanding job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Counselor Charles?
Crystal, can you go back to the ridge that, Mr. Christensen, what is the, what are these little round things in that playground equipment? That interests me. I want to get in one.
Well, they're obviously, I can't say obviously, to me, they're just another children's play apparatus.
Can you get in it?
I believe so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. I've been in them. And the ones that are fun that move, but in this particular park, I've been meaning to report to Melinda, the one that moves is about to fall over. I didn't do it. It was before me. But it needs to be adjusted because it's very scary. I watched the kids getting in it and then it goes oops, because it'll turn around and move. I wish more of them moved, actually. And I wish there were more physical activity there because there's a, these are made for kind of small kids and there's so many tweens that try to go in them and stuff, but you can get in them and some have bigger holes. The hard thing is trying to get in one and out the other. You kind of have to crawl, but it's worth the try. But in, I do have one other comment. The box at the ridge is particularly nice, the book box. It's a little, it looks visible there, but it's not so visible. When you're playing in the park, if you're walking on the path, it's very visible. But it just made me think that people don't realize that you can take a book, leave a book. And we've already done that, but other people, I think we might need some signs in the park because I don't think a lot of people are aware, because I go by and check it and there's not too much movement.
The little area where that free library is, is going to have a lot more landscaping and some natural boulders to sit on to read a book. And then we put a sticker inside of it that says, "Take a book, read a book, Little Free Library."
But don't you think it needs to be visible outside?
We have pretty good success with the ones in the other parks.
Okay. So, it's just starting.
If it turns out that we need it, then we could do that.
Whoever did this one, it's a wonderful box. It's really, really nice.
That was our competition that I lost.
And I thank you, Mr. Christensen, for what you and the commission do. It's wonderful.
Any other questions? Yes. Counselor Hody.
Mr. Christensen, I'd just like to thank you for your dedication and excitement about parks because you've always been that way. I think I've known you for a couple of years now and I really appreciate it and, of course, your commissioners as well. Thank you.
Anyone else? Just an FYI, if y'all have gone to the Raymond Remkus Large Park, the manager said, "Oh, we're going to put up a shade." Boy, that's going to be big. All right now, it's just the pilings, but that thing is going to go all the way over that whole park, play park in Raymond Remkus. It's huge. If that's what I'm, if that's what I saw over the weekend.
There's a major one and then there's several smaller ones. And you guys should see the fabric on them by the end of this week. And yes, they are.
Okay. Good. Yeah. The City of San Antonio has one at Labor Park, which is downtown by the Hemisfer and it is huge, but it really, I think you mentioned last time, City Manager, Counselor, that the temperature is lowered by at least five or six degrees. My granddaughter still has red cheeks, but it's still not as hot. And so, I'm really pleased to get that additional shade for our children and our adults. So, thank you for that. Anyone else in our chambers that would like to ask Mr. Christensen a question on the parks? All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
And let me conclude by saying thank you very much for your continued support.
Okay. Very good. See you at the garden. All right. So, moving then to Presentation Number Two. Presentation of the Monthly Financial Report, ending August 30th, 2019. And we have Vicki Wallace, our Financial Officer, Director, here this evening to present. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is our financial report for the month of August. And if you look at the ad valorem taxes, we did exceed and we will exceed what we originally had budgeted. The other thing that I want to point out that would sort of stick out, if you look at the license permits, fines, and fees, we're at 144.4%. A big portion of that is due to the Building Department for the Timberhill Apartments.
For the what apartment?
Timberhill Apartments.
Oh, the Timberhill Apartments. Okay.
Yeah. So, that's a big portion of what that is. Part of the miscellaneous is because we got reimbursement for TechStop and our interest is up much more than what we had originally had budgeted.
And we got reimbursement from TechStop for what?
When we finished the Evers Road Bridge.
Oh, okay.
The project wasn't done, so we finished it this year, so we received our final reimbursement on that.
Okay. Excellent.
And if you look at the rest of the expenditures, everything is pretty much in line. Special Events is a little off, but you guys are going to approve the final budget adjustment and that will correct that and fix that. Other than that, we should be at 91.6. So, you can see we're trending everywhere except for that one and it's going to be fixed.
Okay.
For the Water and Sewer Fund, if you remember, we were a little concerned about how the revenues were going and we said, "Well, for me, I just sort of wait till we get to the summer months." And of course, now it's dry, so you can see we're at 102%. Everything else is trending as it should, along with our expenditures. When you see the 100% for the other sources and uses, that is the transfer to debt service to pay for the debt that we issued in 2016.
Okay.
The Community Center Fund, hotel taxes are looking a little bit better. I'm pleased with that. Let's just hope we have one more quarter, which will get it in October, will be for the month of September, that it continues the way it's supposed to. If you look at the miscellaneous revenues and say, "Wow, what happened there?"
Yeah.
Well, we went back and did an audit on all of the cleaning fees and so forth and normally, we used to pay Public Works to clean it because they weren't working, but now that they're working, they clean it, so we're not spending those fees. So, now we're just reclassifying it to miscellaneous revenue.
So, that's just $18,000 that's going to be left over at the end of the fiscal year?
Correct.
That will go into the general fund?
So, that's, by Public Works working the weekend, it saved us because normally, we collect the fee and we pay it to Public Works because they would have to come in on their days off.
Okay.
So, that's made it nice. The economic and community development, we still have two more months, three more months to collect, which will be September, October, and November. So, I think we're trending just fine on that. The $79,125, we don't have that yet, so the only thing that you're seeing is 315 that we got back. That's ours that we could reclass. The red light cameras, trending really well. I mean, the late fees, we put in 20 because it was kind of a guess for us because we didn't have a full year.
Wow.
Now, we have a much better grip on it, but it's 175, the expenditure. So, I mean, we're at 1.4, so we're trending really well with that.
Well, you have a report at the next month?
We won't be done.
You won't be done. When will we have a final report of the year that shows what we paid to the state?
You know what my biggest problem is, Mayor, quite honestly, is getting the invoices out of ATS. So, the last invoice we paid them for the camera rentals was in June.
Wow.
Yeah.
So, you're behind.
So, it's like, okay, we need it because I need to report out to the state. So, if I get those in, I may be able to.
Okay.
I just, if they don't come until after we have the council meeting, then we're going to wait and hold it up and we're not going to report to the state because we have July, August, September, and I want to report that because I do not want to pay that to the state.
And does the state have a deadline that you have to meet for that reporting?
End of October.
To the end of October. So, they must get it to you by the end of October. So, you're saying it won't be till probably November before we get a full picture of the whole year?
Yeah.
Okay.
And of course, you know, when I get to September's financials, it's not going to be anywhere near final end because we still have a lot of AP that we will have to do. Our last AP will be October the 14th, plus we have a lot of revenues that we're going to accrue back because we're actually for, you know, the fiscal year that ended and we won't receive them until, like sales tax, the last one we receive is in November.
Okay. Thank you.
Impound Lot, I mean, that's one is also looking really well. We had $222,000 budgeted. We're at $199,880. So, we have one more month to go. The auctions, and they won't have another, it's my understanding, they won't have another auction this fiscal year. We're at 78 and we're at 74,14, and our expenditures are at 175,51.
Right. Well, when I do the math there, so we're going to have at least $100,000 left over? So, that would just go back into the?
Into the fund balance, the general fund.
Fund balance?
Correct.
But could the council designate that for something in particular? And if they do, when would they need to do that?
They can do it any time after we've closed out.
Yeah, I just.
And we know, but we're still, no, we should be fine with that one.
I just don't know, but this is two years in a row that we've just put it right back into the fund balance. I just.
When CAFR is presented, then if you want to do something, I would make it, wait to make a decision then.
And that's in?
Yeah. But it hits the general fund fund balance. So, just so you know, that that money then goes in to fund all the capital, so on and so forth.
Right. But if the council had a specific need, they would see that we have this extra money here in the impound lot that's not designated for any particular purpose. Okay. Thank you.
And so, once again, if you want to look up any of this information, if you're as loose like I am and you like spreadsheets and stuff, you can go to that website. Yes, sir?
That link, it used to work for me the last three days.
Really?
Yes.
Okay. We'll have to look at that and see what the glitch is, if any. Which one is it, Crystal, that we?
Go back to the PowerPoint. The PowerPoint. That one there? And it goes right to it.
Oh, okay.
I clicked it last night and instead of.
Might have just been a glitch in the, who knows? In the internet? We don't, I don't know.
Mayor, I'm sorry, but we have a lot of people speaking off the mic.
That's right. We need to come to the microphone. Thank you for that reminder. Yes.
Other questions?
Any other questions from the council or from our citizens who are in the chambers this evening? Mr. Johnson, do you have any other questions or comments? And Ms. Riddle, do you have a question or comment on the financial? Okay. Very good. I know that you had, were saying something. I just wanted to put it on the record if you cared to do that. Okay. Very good. Thank you. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll move on then. Yes. Moving then to the City Manager's Report.
Writing down the last part of the City Manager's Report right now because I just got an answer. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Wanted to get some feedback on, from you all. We had discussed the council retreat on September 21st, and I think all of us are available except Counsel Bradshaw, right? And so, I'm, I don't, you know, I can do it on the 21st. If you all can do it on the 21st, if you want to wait until the entire body is available. I think we need to come up with another day, but I just need to get suggestions on what you want to do, a consensus, so that I can work towards getting that scheduled for you.
I would prefer that everyone be included and maybe Angela could send out some dates that you're available in the few, you know, Saturdays or maybe even, I'm not sure what Mr. Bradshaw's schedule is, but anyway, and just try to reschedule.
The following week would be the 28th.
And I'm out of town that weekend. That was our first choice.
You're gone.
Yeah.
So, I could not do that time. And then I'm available all the weeks except one in October. The following weekend, the 5th.
What about the Friday? Is everybody going to the TML meeting? That ends early?
It does.
Could we do it that Friday afternoon?
It ends really early. Yeah. So, I won't be here.
And October the 12th is the Soapbox Derby. October the, well, I'm thinking of the Saturday before that, which would be October the 5th, right? I don't show anything citywide there.
Well, why don't we all look at our calendars? I've got to look at my calendar. I don't know what October 5th looks like.
So, we want to look at our calendars for October 5th. And would you all let Angela know if you're available or not for October the 5th? Or if you preferred, as you talked about, Counsel, to do it on the Friday, you could do it Friday evening, starting at, you know, 4:30 or whatever time you two gentlemen get out of work. So, if you call Angela and let her know about the 5th. And then I'll just, we'll just keep trying.
Okay. Thank you.
I sent an email request to each of you asking for suggestions for topics for the 2020 Town Hall meeting. I was hoping maybe during Citizens Be Heard, maybe some citizens have some ideas as well that we hadn't thought of. I still need to know your thoughts. So far, I've heard from Counsel Charles, who suggested an update on the Peach Tree Lot, the, how, the change from the city attorney from the position to the contractual position, the water main conditions, since all the breaks that you hear are reported. I heard from Counsel Rodriguez. She would, talked about maybe some further dissection of the animal ordinance to continue working on that. I heard from Mayor Riley. She also suggested the Peach Tree Lot, as did Counsel Charles, a Banderas Road update, follow-up on El Verde by 2025, a Home Rule Charter update, which I think is really going to be important. I'm going to talk to you about that here in a little bit. Census 2020 education, we're going, I thought we were going to have a table there for Census 2020. Wasn't that at the very beginning discussed or no?
You know, I, again, I was just thinking outside the box. And I know Census 2020 is very, very important and I'd sure love us to get 100%.
And then also, I thought of the pools.
And the pools, yeah.
For the 2020 season. And hope maybe we'll have a recommendation from the pool committee by then. Also, I need topics for the October Coffee, unless you all just want to have a question-answer section and have, all citizens can ask all the directors and council questions, if that's something you'd like to do. We could maybe go over the decisions, what, because the sign committee, we need to get an update on what they've, decisions they've made or what, you know, suggestions they're going to bring forward. Maybe ask for additional residential animal input. The animal ordinance is finalized. We could make, take the opportunity to make certain citizens understand what's been done on that ordinance thus far at the Coffee, because Counsel Rodriguez was talking about doing it during the Town Hall meeting. So, any of, or if you just want to do question and answer, I just need to know so we can get an agenda together through our city secretary. Keep going or get input on that?
You wanted right now?
Yes.
Okay. So, I think if we can move over some of those, maybe an update on the animal ordinance.
For the Coffee?
For the Coffee. What do y'all think? Just to, because I know we're not able to address all of those that we already have. And I think the Peach Tree Lot, that was part of the motion that we made to start the landscaping and the bathrooms with the follow-up at the Town Hall meeting. I believe that was part of the motion, so that for sure would need to be at the Town Hall meeting. Yes, Counselor?
I was going to say, hopefully, we can do the animal ordinance sooner, which would be good for the Coffee with the Mayor. Because I know Ms. Seifert, aren't we discussing that in CPAC this week?
What do y'all think about the animal ordinance for the Coffee? That's your favorite subject. Okay. Yes. Excuse me. Counselor Charles and?
It probably would be great to have a section that's just free-flowing, you know, not, not.
That's what Ms. Counsel was, the question and answer. We always have that, but maybe have a little, and I think what I heard the last time is to have more time for that, but I think we should take an opportunity to try to educate on a particular, where we can have a real good dialogue back and forth. And I know, Ms. Posale, you are working on trying to get a new voting machine there, so I think that's an excellent idea. Because, starting, what is it, November 5th, the next election, we're going to have all new machines. So have you gotten any input from Jackie Callahan on that?
In the city manager's report.
Oh, okay.
We're going to tell you what she said.
Okay, very good, anything else, yes.
Talked to her this morning.
Okay, good.
I have a whole new topic that I'd like us to look into, dark skies ordinance. We learned a lot about it at the conference I went to in Fredericksburg, and it really is unbelievable, and it would help some of the people if we were able to adapt it, which I think we could, but some of the people having neighbors, problems with neighbors lighting up their own backyard, their neighbor's backyard instead of the other, and that can be remedied by a dark skies ordinance, and I'd like, I'd love to see that at the January.
At the coffee? Oh, January.
At the Town Hall meeting?
Yeah, where there's more people.
I believe the city of Halotas has a dark skies ordinance, as I'm recalling, several years back, so.
I have a lot of information on it to pass to whoever works on it.
Did you, did you, did you get that, that Halotas had one, I thought they did. Do you have any sample ordinances from other places? Okay, good, that always helps. Okay, yes, nope, anybody else? Okay.
Okay, so what I'm hearing for the October coffee is an update on the animal ordinance and then a question-and-answer session.
Okay, and what about the sign committee? Did they want to do a-
Update from the sign committee?
Would you be ready? Or no, would you prefer to put it off? Come, Heather, we'd like to hear from you.
Hi, Heather Riddle.
Hi.
Chairman of the Sign Committee. Well, I wasn't prepared to speak on that, but we are almost done. We have one more thing listed on, the stuff that we need to go through for the sign ordinance, and then it's just going to be reviewing the rewritten ordinance.
Okay.
So that's basically all we're waiting on, and the remaining thing, the only reason we haven't done it yet is because it wasn't on the last agenda, so we had to organize it and come back, and our next meeting is next Monday, so.
So it kind of sounds like you might be ready to present something on it by October 20, when's the coffee?
It's 19th.
October 19th.
That depends on whoever's going to be doing the actual rewriting process of the ordinance on y'all's end, but hopefully.
Okay, so what I'll do is, I'll just keep in touch with Mr. Cox and see where you are, and then I'll bring it to the council the meeting before and decide if that's something they want to add on there, or they want to leave.
But yeah, we're trying to get it done, we're excited. Thanks.
Are there any other suggestions from our citizens in the chambers for either Town Hall topics or coffee topics? Okay, all right, very good, thank you.
Hey, thank you, regarding the halt gates for flooding, the one that I've been working on for, what, three years? For, from, tried to get a grant from Bear County. The Leon Valley's agreement was approved in Commissioners Court about two weeks ago, I think, is when I got the email. Bear County is currently working with the contract to determine the schedule, so what order will fall in. Once that's determined, I will let you know when they start planning construction for the Leon Valley sites. But we're getting all of them, and we're getting them at no cost. Wanted to give you an update on William Cox's economic development certification. So far, he's completed one course. After your budget decision, he signed up for three classes in October. He'll do the last one or two classes in November, and then he's ready to test. So he should test in, the first test available in 2020 will be in February. So he should have his certification done within five months into the fiscal year, if he passes his test. That's a really hard test, is what I've heard. The, as you know, the Leon Valley, the LVEDC won its appeal in the lawsuit filed against it by Larry Little, but currently, there's that deposit that's hanging over ahead of the 79,125 with the district clerk's office that was made by LVEDC in order to appeal the original trial court verdict. The district court clerk's office is not willing to release the funds to the city of Leon Valley. They will only release them to a check made payable to the LVEDC, which does not exist anymore, even though it's been dissolved. But Denise did some research, and state law provides that an EDC board, after a formal dissolution, can actually convene, reconvene to wind up affairs of the incorporation. So the way we can do it is one of two ways, we can do that, have the board reconvene, and we've actually been polling and trying to figure out when everybody's available. Or we can file a lawsuit against Bear County District Court Clerk's Office for a declaratory judgment, or it can ask the board, or we can ask the board to meet again. So I asked the city attorney to ask the board to meet again, we don't want to file the lawsuit and spend the money if we don't have to, and so we're trying to figure out when everybody's available, we're going to try to get them to meet one more time. And I think we have three or four responses already.
I have more than that, like, I have a quorum already.
You have a quorum, okay.
So, we'll, I'll be sending out notices to the board members to, for meeting dates and times for availability. And so it shouldn't take that long.
Okay, I got a couple today that showed some availability, so get with Angela on that. But anyways, so that's the way we're going to do it, is the board's going to meet again, and then we're going to do it that way, so we don't have to file a lawsuit or try to get a declaratory judgment. Declaratory, thank you, couldn't come out. I want to thank Lisa Martin, she's not in here, I don't know if the chief's in here, but she's done a lot of work. I have been kicked off Nextdoor repeatedly, been sent messages, and I'm not really understanding why, nor was Chief Valdez, because we talked about it, because the exact same thing happened to him, but his got fixed in 24 hours, mine has taken a couple of months to get fixed. It's fixed now, it's up and running as of yesterday, and so we're starting to post on Nextdoor again. I can't tell you how many people have approached me saying, I don't know what's going on, you're not posting anymore, and so I just haven't been able to. You talked about this a little bit earlier with Melinda, but the playground shade contractor has run into several issues at Raymond Rimkus with the installation of those shade structures. Because I told you, well, they'll be up in a week, and now if you notice, they're not. So it's going to take another week, it looks like, before they're fully installed. Some of the issues that they've come across are the water and sewer lines run right in the center of that playground. They have had some trees in the way, that I don't understand why nobody figured that out at the beginning. The walking path is an obstruction, so they're having to work around that, and the required depth of the structure basis. Public Works is assisting them right now with the water and sewer lines, and they've consulted about changing the configuration of the structure to the path, and then he's going to continue the install. He's profusely apologized for the delay, and he's offered to repair the picnic areas by backfilling them with topsoil around the scoured areas back there, at the concrete pads, and then he's going to plant grass for us. So this will be done after the shade structures are installed, but that's his apology present to us. And Lisa did update this information on Nextdoor, and Marty Bell did on other social media. Bad news, the cedar elm that's near the library has a severe split right down the middle of the tree. This was found when Public Works was trimming trees so that we could see the sign the other day. It's too far gone to save, and so they're going to have to remove it, and they're going to replant a replacement tree just a little bit further back, so that that sign is not blocked. And then we talked about Jackie Callanan and the voting. This was what the message that the city secretary and I got from her today. Commissioners Court met and decided not to reduce any poll sites as we enter the vote center area. All of Bear County's equipment purchases were based on a 10% reduction in poll sites. Commissioners Court last Tuesday voted to purchase additional equipment to keep our standard sites open, negating all of the work that we had done with all of the stakeholders. As of this time, we are coordinating with our entities on availability of sites for the November 5th, 2019 election. And one question that she did have, if you want, you can actually have a machine at the library and at the conference center, or you can take it back to the conference center, you all had indicated you wanted it at the library, if I remember correctly. But hadn't the, hadn't the council already said the library, conference center, and this building? Oh, conference center and this building, okay, so you can have it at the library if you want, or you can keep it at the conference center. And so, there's really nothing, there should be no questions there, right? Okay, I don't know, I have a question. We're still going to have five, so there'll be, because there's one added now.
Right, so instead of four poll sites, you have five now.
Okay, so everybody understand that, there'll be five sites, okay.
That includes the schools, go ahead.
A point of clarification, but the rules changed that people can vote at any of the sites, is that correct?
You can vote at any of the sites, that is correct, yes, sir. Yeah, on election day, that's right.
But we still have the early voting at the conference center, like we've always done?
Okay, yes. I'm sure you've noticed, but right across the street, they're drilling a monitoring well as part of the plume, as it's part of the plume across the street, and so that, everybody's asking what's going on over there, and that's what they're doing. And then the other, well, two more things. First of all, this is all over social media, but the Soapbox Derby definitely have 24 cars, so we have, what, eight more cars than we did last time? It's Saturday, October 12th, it begins at 8:30 in the morning, food vendors, music, award ceremony, this is all over social media, but I just wanted to remind you about it, and hope that everybody can come. Oh, so today, after last night's Home Rule Charter meeting, it really was bothering me that there's going to be different counsel in that meeting, counsel as in SEL counsel, legal counsel. Because, so I contacted Charlie Zech this morning, because he's the Home Rule Charter guru, king guy, and just asked him if he was available on Mondays, so that we just had one lawyer for the Home Rule Charter Committee, and he said that he was available most of the Mondays, and the Monday that he was not available, he could send his partner that knows about it. So, I mean, I can, it's, last time we did this, it cost $11,000, so I can do it either way. I was just kind of wondering what the consensus of the council was, how you feel, and how Denise feels, even Denise, I'm sorry, I was just reading his message, and that's why I'm bringing it up, I wrote it down, literally from the email, how you feel about splitting up counsel, you know, your legal counsel like that in those meetings. That's an important job that they're doing in there. So I first wanted to see if the person that does most Home Rule charters is even available, and he is. So, I don't know how people feel about that, or if you just want to use our city attorney until we don't have, until we have a new contract and see who our new contract is with, and use them, or you want to just get a single attorney just to do this.
Okay, go ahead, Counsel Rodriguez.
Just, I guess, for financial sake, I personally would like to see Ms. Frederick continue until she is no longer our city attorney.
And then go with the new firm, that, whoever wins the RFQ?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else?
Anybody agree with Ms. Rodriguez?
I don't mind the single person, I mean, how long before we know who it's going to be?
It's going to be a while, the RFQs are due September 24th. And then we'll have to review them, and then we'll have to come back to council. So actually, what I'll do is, the personnel manual allows me to add a temporary position if the city needs it. And so I've asked Ms. Frederick that until we have the new city attorney on board, if she would work temporarily until we, and she has agreed to do that. So I, maybe the middle of October, I'm not sure.
We have to have two readings.
Two readings.
Yeah, exactly. So it'd be-
14th.
Would we have it ready for September 30th, and then October 17th, or 19th?
What day is September 24th?
15th, October 15th. And then we don't have another meeting until November 5th.
And then it, whoever we pick, when we start to negotiate the contract and stuff, so I, just to be safe, I'd say the end of October. Just to be safe.
Okay, anyone else?
I'd like to see the same person.
Okay, so that would be Charlie Zech, is that what you're saying? Would that be Charlie Zech with you? Or Ms. Frederick, okay, all right. Counsel Bradshaw.
I'm not, I'm not familiar with Charlie Zech, but I understand that the city's worked with him before. Is he the attorney that advised on the original Home Rule Charter?
Yes, Mayor Counsel Bradshaw, he did, and he's the one that teaches all the classes, like at TML and TCMA on Home Rule charters.
I would, I would like him to be the attorney if it's acceptable to the charter committee, the review committee. Because they just asked the council to be present, was that correct?
They just want, the motion last night was that an attorney, a city attorney be present, so the city would have to hire Mr. Zech. But Denise is the city attorney right now. And so, you know, we could do it either way. What I saw last night is I'm concerned about changing horses in midstream. I would like the consistent legal advice, so either, you know, you keep your city attorney throughout the process to come to the Home Rule Charter meetings, or I just went ahead and went to the person that I know is the expert, then I know that people call and he teaches it. Because this is not something that, certainly I'm not, we didn't have Home Rule charters when I was a county manager. So the Home Rule Charter here was my first experience ever watching a group do that. And so, and Denise doesn't have the experience with Home Rule Charter, she's doing the research for us, but-
From the first one.
Yeah, from the first one, that's exactly right. But you don't have experience with an amendment. Yeah, neither do I. And so.
Okay, yes.
Whatever you want.
Counsel Charles, and then we can also get some input from our citizens.
Well, I think since the Home Rule Charter requested an attorney, and we're trying to, and we have a city attorney, I think we should go with her, and then if she's willing to stay on after her term has expired, then as a contract person, with, to provide consistency, that would be good.
Okay, anyone else, Mr. Hody? I'm just-
I was just wondering if Ms. Frederick would be, can't predict anything, available for the entirety of the committee.
Mayor and council, I don't have any plans as of yet. I'm pretty free, so if you desire me to stay, I'll stay.
Okay, all right.
And I may have misunderstood your question, but Counsel Hody, it appeared last night, from listening and from talking to the team, and then talking to the city secretary, they're going to need to be done by probably December, early January. So that's how long it'll take, I think that was part of your question, right?
Is that in order to get it on the ballot?
Exactly, that's great, in order to get it back to the council and then on the ballot.
All right, very good. Before we finalize this process, is there any input from our citizens who are attending our meeting tonight? Please come forward and state your name and where you, where you live, yes, it's a little warm, and then give us your input, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, my name is Evan Bowle, I live right off of Checkrane Street. I would, my input would be that we maintain consistency in keeping Ms. Denise Frederick as the city attorney on that said committee, if she has the wherewithal to do that. Just to save funds, I do not like to see reckless spending. And in the event of her departure, I'd say we get an attorney that would be able to have the wit to quickly get their feet wet, based on what she provides them, so we do not have that changing horses midstream glitch. I've seen it, I've seen it happen on both ends, so that is my input, and I'd very much like to see this smoothly taken care of.
Thank you very much, Evan, do appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Just a follow-up question, oh, yes, Mr. Johnson.
Mayor and Council, William Johnson for Stokes-Cannerfield. As a member of the committee, I would certainly like to see an attorney that is well-versed in this particular matter as the advisor. I think the discussions that we're going to proceed with are going to be very delicate and very involved. And I would like to see the advice of someone who is an expert in that particular area for the committee, just speaking as a committee member.
Okay, very good, thank you for that. Ms. Kinsler, do you don't have any cost differential between hiring and more, no offense, but somebody that's that's an expert like Mr. Zech versus keeping our city attorney?
I've not even asked the city attorney, like I said, I just got the email, so that's why I thought of bringing it up. Like I said, I just got the email, so that's why I thought of bringing it up, so I felt a little bit disrespectful to the city attorney bringing it up right now. But I had you all together, and this thing is moving and it's happening, and so I just first wanted you to know that I'll more than likely ask Ms. Frederick to continue as a temporary employee, and she has agreed to do that until we have a firm onboard or a single city attorney who maybe gets the RFQ. I don't know who will be picked. But, no, we've not discussed, you know, to me, the reason I asked is because I'm just concerned about consistency for that board in there. I just think, I saw last, it's really important.
But you said Mr. Zech said he is available most Mondays except for maybe one, is that what he said?
A few, I think is where his words, I can look at, I just heard from him.
Okay, so it's Ms. Frederick or hiring, well, they're both hired, because Ms. Frederick's going to be on contract, contract at, after September 30th, or Ms. Frederick?
Well, she won't be in, on contract. What I'll do is I'll have her as a temporary employee.
Oh, okay.
Just because the Personnel Manual says I can do that. So, just in order to follow the guidelines of the Personnel Manual, I'll ask her, I've asked her already, because I can see we're not going to meet the deadline if she'd be a temporary, and she said that she would do that for us.
I'd like to know if Ms. Frederick feels that she'd be available on all Mondays. Yes.
All right, so I, I hear Ms. Charles and, excuse me, Counselor Charles and Counselor Rodriguez feel like Denise Frederick would be their appropriate attorney, is that what I'm understanding? And...
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, and I think she knows when she runs into dilemma, she can call Zech or somebody.
Okay, and, all right, and Mr. Bradshaw?
Personally, I would leave it up to the Home Rule Charter Committee on who they want to be there.
Okay, so I don't, so the consensus I think I hear is at least four counselors, and then I, I agree with Mr., I'd like to get the input, but I don't know if it's in a timely fashion from the Home Rule Charter and their meeting, when's their next meeting?
This coming Monday. Almost all Mondays, except like, I think they're going to come back and talk about a schedule this coming Monday, but most Mondays except, I think they may have exceded the Monday before Thanksgiving and the Monday before Christmas, and then they were going to look if there was any other Mondays that they couldn't meet.
Okay, all right, so I'm not sure if that, how feasible that is, Mr. Bradshaw, but I, I, I agree with, I'd like to hear from them, but I don't know if it's possible, so, okay, so...
Okay. Thank you, I'll work it out with...
Ms. Frederick.
Yeah, I'll work it out with Ms. Frederick and see what, you know, how that would work. Okay. Oh, the last thing I have, it's on the consent agenda, it might not, if nobody's going to pull it, but let me read it anyway. Members of the Leon Valley City Council, it was an email that I just got a little bit earlier, that just had printed off for me. Dear counselors, thank you very much for considering this evening's request for the Leon Valley Historical Society to waive the community center rental fee for this year's Pioneer Blue Gene Gala on October 18th. It means a great deal to us to be able to apply the maximum profit possible towards the restoration of the Heebner Onion Homestead. Our most recent improvement at the homestead was the laying of a subfloor in the living room, which was originally constructed in 1862. The subfloor installation included laying electrical conduit. Our next project is to install dining room and kitchen subfloors and utility roofing. This would complete this part of the work or the first floor of the house, on the first floor of the house. I ask that you please approve tonight's request. Respectfully, Kathy Hill, Board Member, Leon Valley Historical Society. Just received that earlier, and that concludes the city manager's report, and I would stand for questions.
Ms. Counselor, I just had a follow-up on what's happening next door, just, just a background information. We had a contamination of PCE at this Dry Cleaners and one up at Saving Square, and this phase is remediation. They're actually going in there to try to get out the nasty PCE, and that's what they're, they're doing. So, that's all through the EPA, and it's been a long, long process. It started in 2007, so I just wanted to...
Why do they call it a monitoring well? What does that mean?
I guess they're monitoring the, the contamination?
Right.
Yeah, but there's a special process, and I couldn't, don't, don't ask me to explain it, but it's where they're going to actually clean up or try to start cleaning up the PCE. So, that's my understanding from following it all these years. Yes, Mr. Johnson, if you could come to the, unless we could, there you go. There you go. There you go, great. Thank you.
This is going to be a remediation well? William Johnson, Forest Oaks, Cantorfield. You understand this is to be a remediation well?
They're cleaning it up, and I don't know exactly how and what, but that's what they're doing. This is the phase of cleaning it up, is what I'm understanding.
Because remediation well usually involves pumping water out and aeration, as opposed to just monitoring the water that's in there.
Right.
And that's an entirely different kind of animal. If you're, you're pumping the water, subsurface water up and aerating it to create a, a suction that pulls the contaminated water to that pumping location, and then in the aeration, the PCE is released into the atmosphere where it's not a considerable contaminant. So, I'm just, could the, the council or the city manager advise us as to actually which one of these is, is going to occur?
That's right, I could definitely be using the wrong word, I just know they're trying to, to get rid of it.
I just used the word that they just gave me across the street, so I was just copying their language.
If they said remediation...
No, they said monitoring well.
Okay, monitoring is a different, entirely different story from remediation.
We'll get that, we'll get that clarified, thank you for that. All right, maybe I shouldn't have opened my mouth. But I was like, oh, I'm so happy that's finally getting there. Okay, all right, so then we move on to citizens to be heard, Agenda Item Number Four. Are there any citizens or guests that are here in our chambers this evening that would like to address the council? Please come forward and state your name and just where you live, and you have up to five minutes to speak under Citizens to Be Heard. Yes, good evening, Shirley, how are you?
I'm Shirley Owen. Yes, come on to the podium. Hi, I'm Shirley Owen. I'm one of the board members of Leon Valley Historical Society and an advocate for the Heebner Onion Homestead. I wanted to mention that we do appreciate y'all considering our request for a Pioneer Gala, but it's not really a Pioneer, it's a Blue Gene Gala. It's going to be on the 18th from 10 to, I mean, from 6 to 10. We always have a real outstanding gala, and we have a great group that comes, and we have great support from the city as well as the community at large, and we really do appreciate, we've been doing quite a few of these, you know, over the years. This fundraising's been ongoing, but I appreciate y'all considering it very much, and I want to introduce Ruth Lyle, she's also with me, and then we had one other member that had to leave. So, we had three of us here, it was just going to be one.
Okay, great.
But anyway, I also wanted to mention, we have some events, three events that are going on that are not on the calendar that I would like to submit to the group's talk in just a minute ago, for the calendar, because they're connected to Leon Valley or part of Leon Valley.
Wonderful.
So, is there any questions you'd like to ask me about our Gala or anything?
Did you, I think you've already given us the date and the time, and the cost?
Yes, it's $40 per person.
And where do people get tickets?
And you can get tickets, Kathy Hill has her number everywhere, and we'll, you don't have a copy of our flyer?
We do, we have a copy of it, it's posted, isn't it?
And I think you can order online, is that correct? Online, you can get your tickets?
Yes, you get tickets online.
Very good.
PayPal.
Okay.
And so, it should be a really good one. I'm looking forward, I was looking forward to that. And we also have some very lucky Raffle Prize winners.
Right.
In fact, you've been lucky.
So, you have other dates that you're going to give for other events, that you're going to give to Mayor Bell to put on the E News?
Yes, but I'll give them to her, and then we can add them to the calendar. I'd appreciate it very much, because they're all important, and after seeing all the others, we thought, we wrote down really quickly that we do not have the Leon Valley Chamber of Commerce, which is now the Northwest Senate Chamber of Commerce, they're having a black and white gala.
Oh, okay.
And then also, the Leon Valley Historical Society on September the 19th is having a meet and greet with a bunch of the people that did the archaeological, archaeological work at the site.
Okay.
And so, we're even starting that earlier than usually, it runs from 6 to 8.
Okay.
At Leon Valley Library, and they're going to be, do an overview of everything that has been found, and there's been some interesting things, including, I don't know if y'all heard or not, that Ms. Heebner's wedding band was found.
Oh, wow, okay.
It just looked like a clunk of mud, and the guy cleaned it up, and when he cleaned it up, it even has her name written inside.
No way.
So, you can't throw away any dirt, you just have to keep zipping.
That's right. And I thought there was a gold thimble or something too, that was Mrs. Heebner's?
Well, we found gold coins too.
Gold coins, okay, so...
Yes.
And that'll all be on displays this coming Thursday at the library at 6 o'clock?
Yes.
Okay, excellent.
And the archaeologists will be there, and all the ones that worked on the dig.
Excellent.
So, it should be a really interesting meeting, so we invite any of y'all to come. I know y'all are very busy, but sometimes you just have to kick back and talk about the history.
Okay, excellent, thank you, Shirley. Do appreciate all of y'all's work. All right, anyone else?
I just had one more thing to notify the council, I'm actually going to have shoulder surgery, I was just informed of this yesterday, next week, so I'll still be in, but it's going to be, I won't be pulling the, burning the midnight oil like I usually do, they're going to be shorter days for a couple of weeks.
Okay, very good, yes. Good evening and welcome.
Benny Martinez, Seneca. I was here at 5 o'clock, you know, I was the complainant about the city manager, and I feel that since I am the complainant, I should have been invited into executive session to make my presentation. Obviously, this council doesn't want to hear from citizens, that was proven in the 312 hearing, and I'm surprised at the amount of items that were dismissed. There's a lot of things, very important things that you guys had dismissed in my complaint. You know, you know, the witch hunt against Dolan Yornell, closing Seneca Plaza without informing city council in advance, and that, that's an item that myself and Mayor Riley and Kelly Kinsler have agreed to disagree on that, you know, hiring an investigator and the fire chief, usurping the mayor's position in the Home Rule Charter, you know, the mayor is the presiding officer of city council, and, you know, January of 2018, adding six new ordinances without Mayor Riley's approval. And, you know, signing the extension of the red light camera contract without city council approval, that, that to me is a major violation. And her signing the Henry, Ryan Henry's extension of the contract on April 30th, that exceeds the $50,000 threshold that she has, and that needs to be thoroughly investigated, because that could be, there could be further issues with her going over the $50,000. You know, hiring Ryan Henry without, without city council approval on April 30th, you know, the council as a body should have hired him, not Kelly Kinsler. And to be open and transparent, when Mr. Henry made his presentation to council as a body on April 2nd, his involvement should have ended at that point. And any correspondence between Mr. Henry and the council should have been done as a body and not individually. His billing records show that a lot of you, I had personal contact with him, and that is wrong. That needs to be investigated. And the other thing, during the 312 hearing, Mayor Riley was really trashed and defamed, and it, that, that is, that is really uncalled for, and that entire, that right there is a violation of our ethics ordinance, and I believe the personnel ordinance. So, any of the staff members that, that belittled and attacked Mayor Riley really should be I will go through these items that you want more information on, and I'll be glad to provide that, but let's go back to our ordinance. We added Chapter 1, Article 104 of our Code of Ordinances, and it specifically states, if the respondent is a city manager or a member of an appointed board of the city, the city council shall, shall appoint the designated officer. So, this council needs to hire a designated officer to investigate my complaints. That was five minutes?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you'll, if you'll just kind of wrap it up.
Okay, so, in closing, according to our ordinance, this, this council does not have any leeway in this. You, it shall hire a designated officer to investigate my claims against the city manager. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else? Yes, Mr. Blackmore.
My name is Richard Blackmore, I'm a citizen of Leon Valley and a taxpayer. Welcome back, Mr. Bradshaw. Totally weren't missed, but glad you got back safely. We keep hearing this thing from Mr. Martinez at each and every council meeting, the same rhetoric that went on through the investigation. I'm tired of it. I'm tired of seeing him flap his jaws, bumping his gums, the same rhetoric every time. Leave it alone, take it up with your attorney. We don't need this claim to be a city council member that was looking for the, for the people of Leon Valley, the taxpayers. You certainly haven't done it, you cost the city a hell of a lot of money. Let it go. Run the next election, run for the mayor's job, but let it go, let your attorneys deal with it. That's all I got to say, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Yeah, there's no, please let's keep, yeah, no clapping. Yes, next, Mr. Bowle. I'm sorry, I just got a scratch in my throat.
Thank you, Mayor Counsel. Again, my name is Evan Bowle, live right off of Check Green Street. I'm here this evening because I received notification about the Home Rule Charter Review Committee taking place, and I did hear some discussion about the Home Rule Charter. I'm here because I wanted to enforce the idea of Home Rule Charter and to speak on behalf of those in the neighborhood, in the community, both inside Leon Valley and frankly outside in our, in our neighboring communities, that we need to be able to have a city government that has the ability to govern itself without both hands tied behind its back by the state. We need to be able to... its back by the state. We need to be able to pass laws that are unique to Leon Valley and for the betterment of our communities. And as unfortunate as the last few months have been regarding the hearings, that is precisely the reason why we need a Home Rule Charter. We have citizens in our city that have passionate views, that have voices, and if they are able to make their voices known, and if we could have a council that is representative of those voices, then we have a city that operates the way it should be, not operates the way it has been for two decades. And I'm glad to see it's changing, to be honest. And that's another reason why I'm here today. Uh, I have seen little to no, uh, help from our big brothers and big sisters at the state level. And as of, uh, about a month and a half ago, it was made as a serious decision that I myself would become more active, more involved in Leon Valley, and not just Leon Valley, but San Antonio as well, as I run for state office. I live on the other side of Evers, so unfortunately, the better part of Leon Valley is in the District of 125. I will be running in the 116. But I started out as a citizen. I, I'm kind of vocal on next door, hoping to educate our fellow citizens on matters that, uh, are strongest to me, and that is first and foremost to know the facts, and to be ethical, and to be loud, and to be, just have our rights exercised. And so I wanted to ensure, because I personally saw people getting in uproar about the Home Rule Charter just because of how the hearings went. And if we are going to be a society, a city society, that turns its back on a good thing because the city council and the citizens are actually doing their job, uh, it's very sad to me to see that. And I do not like to see the wrong actions enacted because of fear, because of the lack of information, because of the inability to know the facts. And so as an individual running for state office, as a resident of Leon Valley, I see the transparency being exercised and enacted here, and I myself will be exercising the same transparency, if not more so, with my abilities, um, as I go forward. And I will say, y'all will see, be, seen a lot more of me in this community at, hosting events. In fact, I'd like to jump on board with the whole new voting machine, um, system, because I think everyone's gonna want to know how exactly that works and how their rights apply to that new voting system. So, again, my name is Evan Bull, and yes, I am running for the Texas House of State Representatives, District 116. Thank y'all. Have a safe evening.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, very good. Then we'll move then to agenda item number five, announcements by the mayor and council members. Counselor Charles, do you have any announcements this evening?
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. I said some of you are very, we, we're beginning to know each other. I've seen you for many weeks, and that's good. Um, and I wish Mr. Christensen hadn't left, 'cause this, my comment, it's really particular to him, 'cause he was talking about nature tonight. My comment is, I love nature, in spite of what it did to me.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Rodriguez?
Um, I just wanted to, um, acknowledge the event that, um, Mr. Garrity had.
Mm-hmm.
It was a wonderful event. Um, it just seems that as I go along, the military-type theme, um, has really been hitting home, so I was very appreciative, um, for the invite. Thoroughly, thoroughly enjoyed Grandparents' Day. It's the first time I've taken my parents, who had a very, very good time. Um, so thank you all for that. And last but not least, I want to congratulate our PD, um, for the collection of the money at Dunkin' Donuts the other day for, I think it was Special Olympics, and...
All right, very good. Thank you. Counselor Alcasera?
I had an opportunity this weekend that I'd been waiting for, for four years. We have a granddaughter who lives with us, who's now a senior at the University of Notre Dame, and the one thing we wanted to do, uh, before she graduated was go to a game. So we drove to Notre Dame, and, uh, sorry, Ms. Kay, but they, they creamed, uh, New Mexico. But it was, uh, so worth going, an incredible experience. They do a whole weekend of, uh, things for the students and their families, and, uh, we saw everything from trumpets in the five-story building rotunda, uh, being played off of the hundred, the buildings are, some are well over 100 years old, but the, uh, a cappella men's choir, the, uh, band marching around, uh, everywhere on campus. The campus is beautiful. If you ever get an opportunity, it's just worth seeing. So it was a wonderful experience with my granddaughter, and, and I wished we had gone sooner, uh, because we'd be going back to another one, but now it's a little bit late to do it. But, uh, anyway, I just wanted to, to share that. We got in very late last night. It is a long drive, over 3,000 miles round trip, but, um, it, it can be done. Uh, it's well worth seeing the country, too. So, uh, ended up being late coming in because I actually, uh, was responsible for locking the, uh, keys in my husband's truck, so.
[laughing].
Uh, we had many, our extra wait, and he didn't make the meeting last night, unfortunately. But, uh, anyway, I'm very glad you're here. Uh, I hope you keep smiling. It is worth, uh, worth it out there in the world, and we've, uh, I think forgotten to pray for the people of the Bahamas that are really suffering absolute misery. Anything that you can do to contribute to help them and keep them in your prayers will also be good. So thanks again for being here.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Hody?
You know, uh, tiger sanitation has been a big rift. I don't know what the term would be. When we switched over, anyway, there's, you know, a lot of getting used to the once-a-week pickup, and that includes for me, 'cause I've got a big yard and lots of sticks and things to, to throw away. So I, I did want to say something good about them tonight, and that is, for the 24 years that I've lived here, when we put out our bulk trash, it sits there for like, two or three weeks, and that is not an exaggeration. And I don't know if it's 'cause we were the last neighborhood to be picked up, or what exactly. Monday, ours was gone, and I was a little bit irritated, 'cause I wanted to put some more stuff out.
[laughing].
Uh, I also attended Grandparents' Day with my mom, who is a grandmother, and I enjoyed it. She enjoyed it and plans on inviting some of her friends next year, so there'll probably be at least three or four more people next year.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Bradshaw?
Um, I was out, away last council meeting, um, in Thailand, and no, I did not drive there.
[laughing].
But it's good to be back, and, um, I, um, just wanted to, um, say that I, um, was thinking a lot, you know, lately about the victims of 9/11, and also about the hurricane victims, and I echo, um, Counselor Alcasera's thoughts of, of prayers for the families and the victims of those tragedies. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, very good. Um, Louise Malouf from Pavana Place emailed me today and said, "Happy Constitution Day." So today, September 17th, 1787 was the day that the Constitution was ratified. So she wanted, and I said I will do a shout-out to her, 'cause I know she looks at this on the, on the, um, on the video. But, um, the reason that's important is because in the Constitution, it says that every, a census is required every 10 years, and the census covers the entire country and everyone living here. And the first census was in 1790. So, uh, we do have a census committee that's been formed, and Lisa Martin at the fire station, and our new library director are the council liaisons. And, uh, we've got great plans to educate, getting people, um, engaged and completing your form, and, um, we are, Lisa Martin is applying for a grant, so that we have some funding behind, uh, our efforts, and I do appreciate that, and I want to thank her for that. And so there'll be more information on the census, but I believe we've mentioned it before, uh, the whole transition, this census is electronic, and getting your, um, material back electronically, but you do still have the option to either phone it in or to do a paper ballot, and that'll be next, uh, year. I think in, um, March will be the kickoff, March to April. So, but we'll get you some more information. Um, if anyone is interested in volunteering for the Earthwise Living Committee, we certainly could use some help. We're starting to plan for next year's 31st event, so I appreciate, uh, anyone's, uh, efforts. We just started, and I don't know what the theme is. I think we're still talking about it, but we certainly would love to have, have your volunteer spirit there. Um, also, I think I sent the, um, council, I got a note from, uh, Dr. Bob Harris on Red Jacket, and he, uh, wrote me just a little note to say that his wife had had a, um, unfortunate accident at home, and she called the fire department and was just thrilled at 2:00 in the morning that they came and helped her. So I, I really appreciate him going out of his way, uh, to, uh, communicate that to me. Uh, speaking about the future of voting in Bear County, I do have a little flyer that I was given from a friend of mine that works at the, um, Bear County Elections Department, and then she also left me some mail-in ballots. Uh, we do have an election on November the 5th, constitutional amendments, so if you would like an, uh, a, um, mail-in ballot, I'll leave those out on the table as well. And, um, ditto to all of, that's been said about the Grandparents' Day concert and the 9/11, um, memorial celebration at the conference center with the, um, American Legion 336, uh, unit. So they did an excellent job. It was well-attended as well. Okay, so I think that's it. Okay, so now at 7:40, we'll move then to the consent agenda. Is there any counselors that would like to remove any of the consent agenda 1, 2, 3, or 4 for discussion?
I would like to...
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to, uh, move, uh, number 4 for discussion.
Okay, so that would be the appointments?
Yes.
For the beautification committee and the hike and bike? Okay, we can do that. Anyone else? All right. Seeing no one, then may I please have a motion to approve consent agenda 1, 2, and 3 for approval?
I shall move. I second.
All right, we have a motion by Counselor Alcasera, and a second by Counselor Charles to approve consent agenda items 1, 2, and 3. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion does carry. As per, uh, Counselor Charles's request, uh, agenda item number, consent agenda item 6.4, discussion and possible action on a resolution of the City of Leon Valley, Texas, City Council appointing members to the Leon Valley Beautification Committee, 2019 Leon Valley Charter Review Committee, and Hike and Bike Trail Advisory Committee. And Ms. Charles?
The only one I would like to ask to be delayed is the beautification committee appointments, because right now there, there is no chair, and they're not planning to meet until there is one. And so I was wondering if we could delay any appointments to that Beautification Committee until they're up and running.
Okay, yeah, all right. Any, yes?
I actually, um, Mayor and Council, I actually do have another applicant that I was, I told them I'd put it on the next agenda, so you have two new, new people. And I did speak with, um, Vicky. I guess she's already left. Uh, she's the liaison, and she was gonna call the committee together, and you were gonna vote on a chair. Um, oh, I'm sorry, you're no longer on it. Um, but they were gonna vote on a chair, so.
Well, she had sent the message out to everyone that are current members, and no one stepped up to be the chair. So, uh, and then we hit, we are down two members, so I saw one was gonna put up, be put on as an alternate. We need members before alternates. Um, Ms. Humphrey was gonna be, was mentioned as an alternate, and then we don't have anyone willing, so far, willing to be the chair.
Ms. Charles, I didn't think we had alternates on the beautification committee.
It's another, it's another typo, but no, there's no alternate.
Okay, yeah.
It's just a typo, but it's a member position.
Yeah, right.
I don't know what happened with alternates.
Are they willing to be?
Alternates got really crazy.
Yeah, alternate happy. But no, there's no alternate.
Yeah.
Well, as long as there's somebody willing to step us, up, up as chair.
I, I can't.
But if they don't get one voted on at the next meeting, then they probably won't have another meeting, so.
Okay, do you want to make a motion then for, um, consent agenda, agenda item 6.4?
Did Ms. Wallace say when she was calling the meeting?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Well, then I'll withdraw my, my motion, or I will withdraw my suggestion. If she's gonna call the meeting, maybe one of those people who have new applications in, maybe they'll decide to be the chair.
So then just adopt 6.4 as presented?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, except it's not being an alternate as a regular member.
Right, mhm.
Yes.
As a regular member. All right. So you have a motion by Counselor Charles and a second by Counselor Alcasera to approve agenda item 6.4 as presented with the alternate position eliminated.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, as amended?
As amended, yes. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion does carry. Then we move to agenda item number 7, ordinances or ordinance, which is our second reads. We've got, uh, three second reads this evening, and Ms. Posilov, you'll please read 7.1.
An ordinance of the City of Leon Valley, Texas, City Council, amending the 4th of July budget for, of the City of Leon Valley, Texas municipal budget for the fiscal year 2018, 2019, in the amount of $24,615, to provide funding for the Leon Valley 4th of July event, providing for repealer, severability, and savings clauses, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you.
Yes, so you have the updated information we'd requested last time. Thank you.
And this is the, the only change I have on this presentation, is what we estimate for 2017, estimate for 2018, and what we had for 2019, 4th of July, revenues and expenditures. And again, as you see there, noted at the bottom of, um, 2019, we are missing around $19,000 of, was provided for discounts that we had.
Okay, all right. I had a question this, this weekend from someone who said, um, and I, I'd just like for you to explain it. So we're doing a budget adjustment because we only allocated a certain amount of money.
Correct, yes, ma'am.
And so we need to apply the remaining money to balance it out?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
And then you did note in, in your presentation that it will not be coming from the general fund, it'll be coming from sponsorship?
Correct.
Where does the sponsorship money come from? I mean, is there's, is, if it's not in the general fund, where is that? In the special events budget?
I believe so. Is that correct, Crystal, where that money specifically goes to?
So it does get, when we tell it into the, to the system, it does go in, to the 129 account, so that is general fund money, so it's not allocated in your budget, it's general money, it kind of just sits there until y'all allocate it either into fund balance or into, um, it's applied to that line item.
Okay, all right. So it's held in the 129, which is general fund, but it really will be applied from sponsorship money to?
What we received.
Exactly, to the 4th of July.
Correct.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Um, anyway, but we don't, we won't talk about next year. This is just this budget right now.
Correct, yes.
Okay, anyone else? Question for Ms., uh, yes, Counselor?
So it's still, uh, it was a bit confusing to me to say it was needed, but, uh, it wasn't needed, 'cause it was being taken from it. So it's being taken from the, um, the monetary sponsors, but you've already got it counted. You've, I thought in your totals, you already had the sponsors counted.
Yes, but it wasn't on that line item, so what was, what was budgeted didn't...
It's just moving lines.
Correct, just to make it look pretty as finances, yes.
So it'll, it'll balance out to zero.
Balance out, correct, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, anyone else? All right, so may I have a motion on 7.1, please?
Make a motion that we, uh, approve 7.1 as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Counselor Alcasera and a second by Counselor Rodriguez to approve ordinance number 7.1 as presented. ordinance number 7.1 as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion does carry. Moving then to ordinance number 7.2, Ms. Poseliev, you'll please read that ordinance.
An ordinance amending the City of Leon Valley Code of Ordinances, Chapter 1, Article 1.06.1, 1.06.003, providing staggered terms for the Leon Valley Police Department Citizens' Police Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Are you going to-
Yes, ma'am. There were no changes, except for the ones that you made at the last meeting, which was to reflect the, the same staggered term language that we did in the, in the other committees, which I think I had said that it was the Board of Adjustment, but it was not, it was the library.
The library?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right.
So those are reflected.
Any questions for Ms. Poseliev? Yes, Counselor Alcacer?
Yes, I, I had a question. I was concerned by the wording where it referred to the people, come in, wait until I find It was in the area where you were talking about, like under D on page 114, slide 4? I'm sorry?
Is it on slide 4, right here?
Oh, slide 4, maybe.
The, the new language is on slide 4.
Okay, but you still had, it was part of the old language, I guess, that I hadn't noticed before.
Okay, slide 3?
No, it's there too, but it, it's, it's right there just before the, the red letters. The 21 members shall be recommended by the city neighborhood in which the volunteer lives. That's not really happening and, and never did happen, as far as I know. They're kind of people who apply, and they, they have to belong in the neighborhood. So it was just a use since they're not being recommended by the city neighborhood. I would like to take out, shall be from representing the neighborhood that they, where they live, or something like that, instead of what's there, because-
Counselor, I don't think I can do that with this agenda wording, the caption wording. This caption is just wording for the-
Not a caption wording, it's in D1.
I, I think I have to defer to the, to the attorney, because I'm not sure if I've captioned it to be able to change anything but the terms on the agenda. Because I believe at the last council meeting, you were going to come back and change the, the locations. I don't think chief's in here anymore, but we discussed the, the issues we had with the mapping and the locations, and y'all were going to address that.
Yeah, we didn't get a chance to do that.
Right, you were going to do that at a later date. So this, this was just to come back with the terms.
Right, but this is a separate, I mean, this is just changing some wording that's in several locations, because it doesn't actually happen like we have it worded. And so I didn't want to come back and have it changed again. So instead of having it go in like it says, because the 21 members, you're saying we can't even change those-
Well, that's what's been adopted, that's in your code right now, so I'm not sure.
I thought we were changing that part, this whole thing, but we're not.
For the terms?
We can't.
Well, it's, ma'am and counsel, as far as the, because she has in her caption to change the term limits to two-year staggered terms, so if Ms. Alcacer's, if Councilwoman Alcacer's language doesn't affect the term limits regarding the two-year staggered terms, I think it can be amended or changed.
Okay. I just want to make sure we can.
Yeah. I don't see why not.
Okay, well, that, because I would, it's in several locations where it's saying, just says the members-
Unless it's statutory, that, you know, whatever language that is. What did you want to change?
There, there, it's in several locations where it says, the members shall be recommended by the city neighborhood in which the volunteer lives. Actually, they're representing the neighborhood-
Oh, sorry.
-in which they live, and they're not really recommended.
The neighborhood does not recommend that volunteer.
That's impossible for the city neighborhood to recommend, so.
Right. And that's in several locations in the ordinance itself.
So who recommend, who is going to be, members shall be recommended by?
No, shall-
They volunteer from each city neighborhood.
Shall be representing the city neighborhood in which the volunteer lives.
Yeah. Can we change it to that, Cassandra?
Yeah, whatever the, if the council wants to-
And it's in, it's in several locations.
So it's a shall be representing the city neighborhood in which the volunteer lives, right?
Yes, or just the neighborhood.
Shall be, shall represent.
Yeah, the neighbors where they, neighbor, shall represent? The neighborhoods where they live? Okay.
The neighborhood doesn't need the city, I don't think.
Yeah, in which the volunteer lives.
Shall represent the neighborhood in which the volunteer lives.
Okay.
And that is, you'll have to catch the other locations. It's in a, it was in a couple of places, or maybe not if it's not, but anyway, that was my, the thing, I hadn't caught it earlier. Yeah, it's in above, the 1D above and, and 113, the same. But anyone, if you can catch that and change it, thank you. And that's the only other change that I had.
Okay. So do you want to make a motion, then?
Yes, I, I move that we approve, what is it, 7?
7.2.
2 as, as amended.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Counselor Alcacer and a second by Counselor Bradshaw to approve ordinance 7.2 as amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion does carry. Then moving then to ordinance number 7.3, Ms. Poseliev, you'll please read that ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Leon Valley, Texas, City Council adopting rules of conduct and decorum for public hearing, public, public meetings and hearings held by the City Council, providing for repeal your, repealer, severability, and savings clauses, and for, providing for an effective date.
Good evening and welcome.
Thank you, ma'am and counsel. So this is the second read. I did reach out to counsel regarding Ms. Counselor Alcacer's request to have the person wishing to address City Council be called member of the public. I got a consensus back from the majority of the council, three people, saying that they wanted to keep it as citizens to be heard. So I kept it at citizens to be heard. If you want to have a discussion about that right now, that's fine with me, but that's what I kept it at. I just want to be fair and have everybody put their, their thoughts into that and their comments. I did, as you can see, the red, I did change it to, a person unable to attend City Council meetings may submit written comments, including their name and place of residence and up to and during the meeting date via email, regular mail, or by fax. I included Ms. Counselor's email address as requested. We put the fax number, let's see, and then I put, members of the public may address City Council during citizens-to-be-heard portion of the meeting. Again, citizens to be heard. And then I, I removed the capitalized P because it is members of the public, but it's not what we're going to be calling it. So that goes on throughout. You wanted to remove that last bullet and incorporate that language up further, so I used that language and incorporated it up at the top, if you want to read that and see if that's to your liking. On number 3, I added number 3, and anyone desiring?
Excuse me, just a second. I thought we, we were going to eliminate that maximum of 30 minutes, right? Didn't we talk about that?
We said the 30 minutes on the first part.
Per agenda item will be allowed it?
I don't think we ever talked about.
Oh, okay.
The other one at the beginning of it.
I thought it was consistent.
I don't have a, yeah, I don't have a problem with making it consistent.
Mm-hmm. We had eliminated that at one point in the decorum, so.
I thought it was that one that's-
Right, we said it, we just didn't deal with the other, but I think we, it was generally said we don't need it. Well, we haven't had a problem with it, and some items need more than the 30 minutes. Most items have never needed it.
Okay, do you want to keep that, or?
No, I think, well.
I thought just delete it, but what do y'all think?
You mean, leave the 30-minute limit, or take it out?
No, take it out, is what I'm saying. I think we can handle it.
I think we can take it out.
Okay.
Go ahead, yes, Counselor?
I have, on the part where you put in, the ones unable to attend, may submit written comments.
That's further up, I think, at the top, right?
It's on 129?
There, oh, right there.
Right there.
Um, where is it?
You might want to go up a little bit further, just right there?
I, I wanted to say, which must or shall include their name and place, because it's too close to the word may submit it, and I don't want them to say, well, you said may, we may include our name, and if they complain and their name, when their thing isn't read or whatever, considered, maybe we have to say in order to be considered, or presented, or whatever, because the idea is that we don't want anonymous comments.
Should we say-
Counselor, Counselor Bradshaw?
Should we say then, may submit written comments and must include their name and place of residence?
Yes.
So that it's clear?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go down, okay. This number 3, okay? Anyone addressing to speak, desiring to speak during any portion of City Council meeting shall be first recognized by the presiding officer.
Yes, that is essential.
And ma'am wanted me to include that? And, hold on. I did add ceremonial items, informational presentations, if any, will be placed at 6:00 PM or at the beginning, as suggested by Councilman Bradshaw. Did you, that was you, wasn't it? Or the beginning?
He wasn't here.
I think, I think it was me, but it was at, but you're just missing, you read at, but it's not in there, or at the beginning of scheduled business meeting.
At 6:00 PM or the beginning of scheduled.
Or at the beginning.
Okay. I included City Council members, staff, and members. I think that was requested by Ms. Charles. When any person is addressing City Council staff or members of the public, no personal attacks on staff, members of the public, or City Council shall be allowed. That bullet, that language is going to be moved up to the second bullet, presiding off, the presiding officer will warn the person that he or she will be required to leave the meeting room if the disruption continues. So I took out will request, Ms. Alcacer requested that. And then you go from, go straight to a warning and then ask to leave. Is that okay?
Counselor Rodriguez has a question.
Ms. Rodriguez, on number 8, that, where it says Roberts Rules of Order will take precedence for conduct not covered by these council meeting rules, is there a specific version of, or addition of Roberts Rules of Order that we're using?
Just the latest addition.
Latest addition, all right, thank you.
But I don't think anything's changed.
Probably ever.
In 50 years. So, um-
Just, yes.
I have a comment in number 7, too.
Okay.
I, I see, I think this was added, because I don't remember seeing this before, threat of violence, and I'm glad that was added in number 7.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I moved the language that I think was in another, I think, I just put that language in there, just to cover everything. I think, it's been a while. So I took out, yeah, I took it out right there, and I added that up at the top. And just, the rest of them is just number changes. So, just to go back over it, you want, hold on. You want to take out the last bullet under 2?
A maximum of 30 minutes per agenda item?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, um, you want me to put at?
And then put the word at, or at the beginning?
Yeah. And then, what else? There was something else.
Where is it? Where you, shall include it's in-
Yeah, okay, yeah, at the, at the top, shall, they must provide their name and, the residence. Okay?
Okay, yes, Counselor Bradshaw?
So I did have a couple of questions. I, you know, I wasn't here for the vertrage, but I-
Right.
Was able to watch the council meeting on a 15-hour plane ride. And number, section 4 at the bottom, and a question. It says, yeah, right there.
Yeah?
Such, sorry, it's renumbered. Oh, yeah, the bottom one, such rules do not apply to city staff, employees, and the execution of their duties to City Council. What is, what does that mean, I guess? Which rules do not, do not apply to city staff and employees? Because up above you, several places, it says, staff and members of the public shall not do this, and staff and members of the public. It says it both, so.
That was, that, this, these rules of conduct are during public meetings for City Council.
Right. Oh, so you're saying it shouldn't, doesn't apply to other meetings by the staff?
It doesn't, no.
It, it's just specific to the council meeting?
City Council, yeah.
Is there some way we can make that more clear?
Yeah, I don't, I didn't get that either, so.
But that's not what that means. I think that just means in their, let's see, such rules do not apply to city employees in the execution of their duties to City Council. So I didn't, that's not my language.
It was already there, I understand.
It was already there, so I-
I mean, and since this whole article is about the, the, sorry, the rules of conduct during public meetings.
It doesn't make sense for it to be there.
Should we just take that out as the question?
Yeah, I agree with that, I agree. Yes, Counselor-
I think part of why it was there was, had to do with telephone usage.
Oh, that's right.
That maybe just needs to be more specific, but we were talking about the-
That's right.
The staff being able to use their telephones.
Their cell phones and their computers.
And not, not the-
Because that would only apply to City Council.
Right, right, but under that part, it does say, council members shall not use devices. It doesn't say staff, like the other ones do. I don't know if that's sufficient or not.
Maybe, maybe.
It's up to you.
So, but anyway, we're not clear what, why that's there, so something needs to be-
It just seemed like a conflict, because it says, rules don't apply, but up above it does say they're, you know, staff and members, so, on some parts of it, but not all.
I think being consistent is important.
Maybe move it up under the others, about devices.
Okay.
Let's look at that device section again.
Number 6.
It just says council members. I think that that's good enough without having to add that the rules do not apply to staff and city employees. Or we can add a bullet that says up there at the top, can you go up, Crystal? Add a bullet saying that this section, number 6, does not apply to staff and city, employees and city staff in the execution of their duties.
That's probably where it should go.
Yeah, that's probably a good place.
Is that, everybody is okay with that?
Is that all right with you, Mr. Bradshaw?
Yeah, that's, that's better, I think, than the way that it was, I was like reading it all, and then it said- Yeah, that's, that's better, I think, than the way that it was, I was like reading it all, and then it said, basically, this doesn't apply, and I was confused, so, that makes more sense.
Any other questions on the specifics, yes, Counselor Hody.
So on the portion where it says up to and during, as far as sending emails, I just have a little bit of concern, I know we spoke about it at the last meeting, those all being caught. Do Ms. Counselor and Ms. Pasley, do y'all feel like, that everyone's will be answered, or spoken about during that time?
Mayor, Counselor Hody, I do, I've been sitting here answering emails right now, so I do believe that.
All right, good enough, thank you.
Okay, yeah, so, the reason they're allowed to have the devices is because of the questions and input from the people who are at home, is that correct? Okay.
But just for clarification, yeah, we could still do research and do our work, though, right? Just want to make sure.
When you say, do our work, what do you mean?
Like, I just, the, a good example is what I told you right at the beginning, I said, oh, I need to add this to the city manager's report, because I was reading Charlie Zech's email and answering him, and then I brought it up to you, so.
Just the input I've gotten is that, um, from, from some of the citizens, is that distraction, you know, if we could just, I, I know you've got to do your work, but if we could limit it, you know, as much, as best we can, our uses of our devices, and because, Ms. Counselor, you're the only one up here on the, because apparently, you all can't see it, but the people that are online can see it much more readily than you all can, because you're lower, number one. Number two, the other input I was getting was people getting up and moving around during the meeting, that that was distracting. But anyway, and I'm thinking, well, should we take a break every hour, I mean, and I'll be glad to, you know, but anyway, just wanted to give that input that I've been receiving, and I still want to support up to five minutes on citizens to be heard, so, that's my two cents, so. Okay, anyone else? Yes, Counselor Bradshaw.
Yeah, that was the other comment that I had, watching the video and talking with some other citizens since then, I know we discussed limiting it to three minutes, but I think tonight, there was one citizen who went to five minutes, and I, I don't believe that has been a big problem in the past, so I would like to move it back to five minutes, if we could.
Okay, anyone else?
I think we need to keep it at three, I mean, as you see, most of them don't, and it's the purpose of the talking, but, I mean, if we, if there's a problem, the presiding officer can add it, if there's a legitimate reason for continuing talking.
Okay. Anyone else have a different comment, or support, or? Okay, does that say it in the rules, that citizens be heard, three minutes, comma, but at the discretion of the presiding chair? I just want to be sure, because I certainly am going to try to, you know, give that leeway as we need it, so.
So it's right there at the second bullet, at number two? Do you want to add?
I don't know, I mean, I just, if you wanted to be clarified, I just, because that's what I'm hearing, from Ms. Alcacer, is three minutes, but if the chair, presiding chair feels like they need more time, then.
That's just a gen.
That's inherent.
Yes, that's just a general thing.
I just want it to be understood, so, yes, Counselor Bradshaw.
Does that mean that we're going to time every citizen, you know, like Crystal did earlier, and that, to me, you know, like I said, one person tonight went over the five minutes, or.
Went to the five minutes, yeah.
Went to five minutes, um, but I think several people that spoke tonight went to at least three minutes, so we would have that buzzer going off, every citizen to be heard, and it would be more of a distraction to me.
Well, that's common during city council meetings, that they're, I mean, it may not be that loud, but.
Normally it's not, normally I wave at the mayor, I just forgot to drop my body.
But that's common, and the city secretary or the city clerk usually times the person.
Right, right, and I'm not talking about the timing, I'm, I'm not, I'm just, was talking about if every person gets up, we have to wave away, because it's only three minutes, that's, was my concern.
Doesn't happen, but, uh, let's try the three.
Well, I think we can observe it, and if we feel like we need to adjust it, then we can always adjust it.
And, um, the mayor is, has the power to give as much time as she likes.
Okay, all right, so, any other, um, questions, comments from the counselors? If not, then I'll open it up to our guests and citizens here in the chambers. Do you have any input on the new rules for decorum, which will be, this is a second read, so that it would be at the pleasure of the council tonight, what they'd like to do? Yes, Mr. Bull, we've gotten to know you this evening. Good evening, and welcome back.
Thank y'all, thank you, Mayor and Council.
Mm-hmm.
I was just walking back in, when we were talking about the notification for, uh, time to speak, and I thought, um, here at San Antonio City Council, they usually have a timer that we can look at, and the secretary says time, in a very nice, elegant, but firm way. Being that we're smaller, I believe we could have essentially a stoplight, in a way, you have a green, uh, green is to start, whenever everyone's to talk. Yellow light gives you a fifteen to twenty second remaining to wrap up your thought, and then obviously, red light is to be done with your talking. That phone alarm shocked me, because generally, that's like, that's my wake-up alarm, and I'm sensitive, yeah, I'm sensitive to the alarm, so I know that, but I thought that's a very, less disruptive way, but very obvious notification in that regard, and that was really just my own thoughts.
Okay, thank you, yes, Counselor Bradshaw.
Mr. Bull, um, thank you for your, for coming tonight, um, you, so you've been to the San Antonio City Councils, can you tell me, do they have five minutes or three minutes, do you know?
Uh, it, depending on how many citizens are there to speak, it rank, it's usually about three minutes, because we have an average, uh, number of speakers, about four times as many as we've had this evening.
Okay.
And they do have a sign up, a sign up, uh.
Sheet.
Uh, system, and which you can sign up to speak, all the way up to about, I believe it is a couple hours, or up to about two hours before the session begins. Generally, it's already packed by noon of the same day on Wednesdays, so you can sign up any time around a couple days to the day of.
All right, thank you for your input.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, yes, Counselor Hody.
Under number two, bullet point two, what would y'all think if we took out a maximum of, that just sounds restrictive to me, and just say allowed three minutes, knowing, you know, that you can keep going, and I don't want a timer going off at three minutes, five minutes maybe, but not three. So if they're on a roll, you know, let them go as long as it's not.
I'm with you, you bet, thank you.
Which one was that?
Bullet number two, under two, members of the public will be allowed, instead of a maximum, just allowed three minutes to provide comments.
Is that everybody, or?
Everybody agree with that?
I agree with that.
Yeah, okay, thank you, that's a good, good suggestion.
Anything else?
All right, so what's the pleasure of the council? This is a second read, we are able to vote on this ordinance this evening. Oh, I have another comment, oh, before we vote, come on down, sorry, thank you. And welcome back, Mr. Johnson.
William Johnson, Forest Oaks, Cantorfield, um, I didn't get a firm feel for the, that section D, that it doesn't apply to, to staff.
Okay.
What, I, I, I was very unclear as to what.
Okay.
The resolution was on that.
All right.
One way to do that is just to change that sentence from, it doesn't apply to staff with respect to communication devices, and then it becomes exceedingly clear.
Okay.
Because the way I read it right now, the, the, the council members are, could be accosted by members of the staff, because it doesn't apply to, uh, members of the staff.
We took it out already.
Yeah, did we eliminate that one? I thought we took it out.
You already addressed it, went on, you wanted to add it to number six, as a third bullet?
Yes.
And say that this section does not apply, um, to city and staff in the execution of their duties during city council, so.
Right. Right, so we limited, we limited it to, to their duties.
I wasn't sure, I was listening, and I just wasn't sure what.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, yes, and then we eliminated that other sentence at the bottom, is that correct?
Yeah.
All right, very good. Any other questions, comments, clarifications on the proposed ordinance?
Go ahead, make a motion.
Yes, okay. And Counselor Rodriguez, okay?
I'd like to make a motion to, um, to accept the, what is it, seven point, or the rules of decorum with the changes. That would be it?
Oh, second.
All right. We have a motion by Counselor Rodriguez, and a second by Counselor Alcacer, to approve ordinance number seven point three with the suggested changes discussed in our, um, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion does carry, thank you. Moving then to our regular agenda item number eight, uh, these are our first reads, we've got two first reads, and please note that we have public hearings on each one of these, and so we will be opening and closing for public comment on both eight point one and eight point two. So Ms. Pasley, if you'll please read, uh, eight point one ordinance, please.
An ordinance of the city of Leon Valley, Texas, city council, amending article fifteen point zero two, zoning ordinance of the city of Leon Valley Code of Ordinances, in chapter fifteen, appendix C, sustainability, gateway, and commercial, and industrial overlays, district standards regarding requirements for building materials, providing for repealer, separability, and savings clauses, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, and Mr. Malan is here, two percent, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, uh, first item tonight, regarding planning and zoning, uh, this is a code amendment to amend our city's zoning code, and remove the applicability of currently existing building material requirements, uh, from applicability towards all residential and commercial construction that occurs essentially after September first, um, which, which is already passed. This is, we're having to do this, uh, due to recent legislation that was passed at the last legislative session, uh, the, the House passed HB twenty-four thirty-nine, um, and the governor signed that bill into law on June sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, and essentially, what that bill said was, um, and I've included the, the bill in your packet, um, and what's, it's actually a law now, uh, and so what that law said was, was that a, that no Texas city can enforce, or after September first, no Texas city can enforce, or enact, a regulation that prohibits the use of a building material, if the model building code that that city has adopted within the last three, uh, adoptions of a building code, uh, if that model building code says that that building material is permitted, uh, then the city cannot essentially say it's not permitted. Um, and, uh, and so, uh, most city zoning codes have regulations that say, you know, uh, for example, ours, you know, our, our standard zoning districts throughout their zoning code have regulations that say, you know, um, at least seventy-five percent of the facades have to be masonry, our sustainability code, our sustainability overlay goes a little bit further and says that, um, you know, eighty percent of walls have to be constructed of masonry, and ten percent have, has to be at least brick or stone, uh, and so our, our code has these regulations, and, and most zoning codes do as well, and so, um, that's what, that's what this, uh, this piece of legislation did, uh, essentially takes away our right to, um, govern the, the materials, uh, and the aesthetics, uh, of the architecture that's constructed in our community. This bill, uh, was, uh, co-authored by former Representative Justin Rodriguez, and it was passed and approved by our current representative, Ray Lopez. And, uh, like I said, the law went into, uh, went into play on September first, that was when the law had an effective date, uh, and so, tonight, we need to go back through and change our code, uh, to make sure that we're complying with law. And so, uh, of course, any changes that you do to the zoning code has to go to the zoning commission first, uh, this proposed amendment went to the zoning commission last Tuesday, and, uh, so, in the proposed amendments, uh, what we do, anytime something like this comes into play, you know, I was looking, see what Texas Municipal League recommended that we do, and included in your packet is a, uh, kind of a Q and A by Scott Houston, who is the attorney for the Texas Municipal League, and he has some recommendations on how we should, uh, deal with this, you know, what kind of approach should we take? So one approach essentially could be to go in and, you remove all the different requirements from our code, just essentially gut the code of any kind of building material requirements. I think there are some cities that have done that, have taken that approach, um, but, you know, Scott Houston's approach, I think, is, uh, uh, really unique, and I think, uh, is, um, and his recommendation, I think, is really the best recommendation to make here, and that's what we've done. He recommends that cities take a very literal approach to the legislation, uh, like I said, in the, in the legislation, it says that these rules apply to residential and commercial buildings. You could take a pretty broad approach to that, and just say, well, yeah, most buildings that are constructed are residential or commercial, or, like I said, he recommends you take a lit, a very literal approach to it, and, um, and, uh, you know, assume that this law applies to residential and commercial buildings. Well, there's all sorts of different types of buildings, there are some buildings that aren't residential, commercial, there are institutional buildings, there are public buildings, uh, and so he doesn't really recommend you go in and gut all the requirements, he said, go in there and, and change your laws to say that building, keep your building material requirements, but make sure to caveat it in your code that, um, that, that the, that these material requirements don't specifically apply to residential or commercial buildings. And so, that's, that's the approach that staff is proposing for you, you know, we spent a lot of time over the years looking at our architecture requirements and our zoning requirements, we've hired consultants and paid consultants a lot of money to come in and write these regulations, and look at our city, uh, and, and, you know, recommend regulations to us that either preserve the character of the city, or, or, or preserve, or propose to enhance it, so, um, not, staff's not recommending you go in and gut all these requirements, uh, and so, uh, included in, also included in your packet is exhibit A, uh, those are the proposed revisions, so what we're proposing is to go in, and essentially, uh, every single place in the code where it says, um, you know, masonry is required, we're proposing to caveat that and say, except for residential and commercial buildings, exterior walls shall be constructed of masonry or other similar non-combustible materials, um, and, you know, the requirements are pretty similar all throughout the code, so we're just recommending that you go in and caveat that. Like I said, that's a good thing, based on Mr. Houston's advice, and it's also a good thing, you know, you never know, uh, there were a lot of laws passed this last legislative session that, um, I would say, take away cities' abilities to govern themselves to the extent that I think, um, many of us would, would like us to be able to govern our own cities, and so, this, this law may be challenged next legislative session, so if we go and remove everything, um, maybe the law's challenged, and we get this, this right back, then we need to go put it back in there, so that's a lot of duplicative work, so, uh, staff's recommending amend the code, caveat it to not apply to residential, commercial buildings, let's see what happens next legislative session, and, uh, maybe hopefully, we can go back through and remove that caveat, um, if not, we'll look at different ways to make sure we preserve, and, uh, we're able to enhance the aesthetic character of our communities. Uh, one last thing I do want to point out, on exhibit A, I did miss on the first section there, uh, I didn't caveat that with the except, so on, uh, exhibit A, where it says section fifteen oh two, three oh six, D four, masonry required, um, need to put in there, except for on residential, commercial buildings, so I'll make that change before, uh, second reading on this. But other than that, on exhibit A, you know, rather than just go put our entire three hundred page zoning code, I just pulled out the individual sections of our code, but we would need to make these changes, and included that in your packet. With that, um, happy to take any questions regarding this proposed code amendment. Thank you.
All right. Any questions on, uh, the proposed ordinance 8.1? Yes, Counselor Alcaser.
Did you say that our representatives approved this code against TML's recommendation?
That's, uh, when you go online to the Texas House of Representatives, you type in HB 2439, it gives you a whole breakdown in this bill. I mean, it's, it's a lot of information. When you go look at the sponsors of the bill, uh, former Representative Justin Rodriguez, uh, sponsored, co-authored this bill. And you can look at the votes. You can, it gives you a tally of all the votes. And our current representative, Ray Lopez, voted for the passage of this bill.
Oh, my, Mr. Bowe, you have your work cut out for you. Listen to TML, please.
Okay, any other que, I'm, I was just, the question I had is, how does this affect our sustainability overlay district? It has all of these specific requirements, so, if any.
It means that, uh, our sustainability zoning district is, is part of our zoning code. And so what this law says is that, that no zoning, you know, the city cannot enact a zoning regulation that regulates building materials. So that means that, you know, the building material requirements, um, in our, I mean, it says you can't, you can't regulate them. So any of the building material requirements in any of our base zoning districts, standard zoning districts, B2, R1, R3, R4, doesn't apply to residential, commercial buildings. Our sustainability overlay district, uh, like I mentioned, that kind of ratchets up architecture in many ways. That, we can't enforce that on residential, commercial buildings either.
Uh, Counselor Bradshaw.
I know you said it, um, applies to residential and commercial buildings. So does that mean that it does not apply, um, to, like, uh, for example, we just passed a month or two ago, the, um, fence ordinance where we said it could be, um, steel or masonry. So now does that mean the building materials that are approved, you can do anything, or that doesn't apply to the fences?
To my understanding, it wouldn't apply to fences because they're not regulated by the building code. And so, you know, building code just applies to structures that are, you know, inhabited, so.
Gotcha, thank you.
Sir.
Wow, I've just, yes, Counselor Charles.
And just for the citizens in the audience here, did, there was a letter written asking the governor not to support this, right?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, the, the city, uh, issued a letter, uh, asking the governor to veto it. The mayor signed that letter on behalf of the community.
Okay. Any other questions by the council, and I'll open up the public hearing. Yes, Counselor.
Can you have an S U P for every, can we put that into the zoning code?
Well, actually, you know, an S U P, we wouldn't be able to, you know, because S U Ps, uh, are just, um, you know, any kind of requirements you put into an S U P, it has to be a function of, of that use. But the PD, we have been talking at the zoning commission, that's a good point to bring up, Counselor Alcaser. We have been talking at the zoning commission about the creation of a new planned development zoning district, which is kind of like S U Ps, uh, but much more complex, much more detailed. And, and you have the ability to go into more depth with requirements. With S U Ps, it kind of needs to be, uh, a, a function of the use. Whereas with PDs, uh, you, to my knowledge, you can continue to ask for additional materials because of the PD. You know, the developer needs something from the city and there's a give and a take there. So with PDs, I believe it could still apply.
Anyone else? All right, so at this time, 8:31, uh, we do have a public hearing on, uh, a proposed agenda 8.1. And I'll open that at 8:31. Is there anyone in our chambers that would like to address this proposed ordinance? Please come forward, state your name and just where you live, and you have up to three minutes. Yes, please, Mr. Bowe. Always glad to hear from someone.
Short people problems. Mayor and Council, again, my name is Evan Bowe. I'm off of Checkraine Street. Um, after learning what has, uh, just passed in our previous legislative session, I personally have been reading through the tumultuous bills that were and weren't passed and who did co-sponsor them, because we do need accountability. And it, it is hard, it's a little gut-wrenching to know that two representatives that I deem as good friends actually co-sponsored this bill, um, and it is impacting Leon Valley in a very unsavory way, in my opinion. But I would hope to think we need to find, I would like to know what it is that they are, the bill allows, um, in terms of the building material, because I know certain materials that allow us to write, uh, what we regulate is also for safety reasons. And there are certain materials that don't quite, um, like, come under hazardous material, but at the same time, they're not so healthy as well, or they're not, they don't, do not, uh, fit with future sustainability, uh, plans when, when we go forward, going forward into the, the following couple of years. As I know, you know, climate change and the, this, the use of, uh, certain materials to better, uh, recycle energy use is going forward. And so I, I would like to just say that I myself will look into this personally. I will, um, have my own say, even at the state level, um, as a person, as a resident now, and as hopefully as a future representative. And hopefully in the next legislative session, whether it's by my hand or the future representatives, it gets, uh, repealed. So that is just my two cents on the matter. And I, I would hope that the city looks into what materials is essentially is letting in versus what we're not able to keep out. And I do like, uh, that gentleman Scott's recommendations, and I really hope that y'all take that to heart when going through the code. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council on this particular ordinance on building materials? Okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. Bowe. So at that point, uh, 8:35, uh, we will close the public hearing. And we'll address this at the next council meeting, which will be Monday, September 30th. We have changed the, for those of you that are here, we changed the first Tuesday meeting, that's national night out, to Monday, September 30th. So this will be on that agenda for your information. All right, moving then to agenda item number 8.2, another first read. Ms. Posely, if you'll please read that ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Leon Valley, Texas, City Council amending Article 15.02, Appendix C, Section 2C5 of the city's zoning code regarding minimum rear, rear yard setbacks in the sustainability overlay district providing for repealer, repealer, separability, and savings clauses, and providing for.
Thank you. And Mr. Milan, if you'll please present that, this ordinance, please.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. I'm going to keep my presentation brief and try not to confuse everybody on this one. There's a little bit of history on this one. The purpose of this zoning code amendment this evening is to amend the rear yard setback requirements within the sustainability overlay district. Currently, uh, Article 1502, Appendix C, that's, that's your overlay district standards portion of the zoning code. Uh, that section currently regulates minimum rear yard setbacks in the sustainability overlay district. And the current setback, uh, in the sustainability overlay district for a rear yard is six feet, unless you're abutting a residentially, unless you're abutting residentially zoned land, then it, it goes up to 30 feet. And so the intent of that is to provide additional setback and buffering when you have, uh, commercial use adjacent to residential use. And, uh, and, you know, that, depending on how tall the building is, that setback can either be extremely, you know, helpful or, or maybe, um, you know, depending if it's a one-story building, um, it may not be as necessary. And that's sort of what we're going to talk about here, uh, this evening. For, for many years, when we didn't have the sustainability overlay district, um, the, the setback requirement for, uh, commercial buildings when they were abutting residentially zoned land was 25 feet or 20% of, uh, the, the depth of the lot, depending on whichever's less. So generally, it was going to be 25 feet. And so when we had, when we created the sustainability overlay, the sustainability overlay district ratcheted up another five feet. And so that, essentially, every single piece of commercial property that's either B2 or B3 is sustainability overlay, so. And, uh, and so this, this really hasn't, you know, I haven't noticed this as an issue, um, in the year and a half that I've been here on some of the properties that we've, commercial properties we've developed, until, uh, I started working with the property owner of the lot just south of the Bush's Chicken. Uh, I mean, there's a little vacant lot over there, um, and it backs up to, uh, some lots over in Linkwood that are zoned townhouse. So started working with this property owner and realized that these lots up here at that section, those commercial lots that were platted a long time ago, and they're really narrow. They're about 130 feet deep. That's super narrow. No land developer would plat any commercial lot, uh, these days unless it had at least about 200 feet of depth. They'd probably want about 250. And so the properties adjacent were developed, um, some time ago. They were developed before we had the sustainability overlay. Sustainability overlay requirements are great. They ensure buffering, additional landscaping. It's good, good intentions, good ordinance. But on a narrow property like this, it does make it a little difficult to fit everything you need to fit in, such as a 10-foot landscape buffer. Code requires 10-foot landscape buffer between the property line and the parking lot. Then you still need to get your parking, um, 18 feet, you know, parking depth, 24-foot drive, 25-foot drive aisle, chief, sorry. And 18 feet of, another 18 feet, and then you need a little bit of space in between the parking lot and your building. Then you need to still get a building that has enough leasable space for you to make money on it, um, for the prop, project to pencil out. And then, and then we've got the 30-foot building setback. So, long story short, been working with this property owner, uh, noticed they were having some issues with their setbacks. Thought that, um, 25 feet would assist them as a planner. 25 feet didn't scare me. Going from 30 to 25 didn't scare me. Number one, I professionally think 25 feet is appropriate, especially when you've got, uh, requirements for canopy trees every 15 feet, uh, which the code already requires. And, here's another biggie, and whenever our code already, uh, has another requirement, if you're, if you have a commercial property that backs up to residential property, you still have to get an S U P too. And with an S U P, you can still ask for additional things in the S U Ps, such as additional setback. So seeing the complications this, this property's having, um, they've submitted for permit, they're not permitted yet, but seeing some of the issues that they're having and kind of seeing that additional five feet that the sustainability overlay implies, professional, my opinion, I, I thought that that's just providing one more complication, uh, to our, our properties on Vander Road that are trying to develop, um, if they, 25 feet, they need 25 feet. The only way to get out of that's a variance, or to say they need, if, if we keep the code at 30. So I, I felt like that's just creating one more complication, um, and reducing it to 25. Since we still have the S U P requirement, the city's not forfeiting any, um, they're, they're not forfeiting any kind of safeguards for, you know, ensuring that commercial district, uh, commercial properties are properly developed with residential, since we have the S U P requirement. So anyway, we, we took this requirement, there, this, this change of zoning commission. In the meantime, we've determined that the alley was in fact fully vacated. And this property has a 15-foot setback anyway, so, um, well-intentioned code amendment. They're still going to have to make some changes because right now, through recent, recently working with them, they only have a 15-foot setback anyway. So, like I said, well-intentioned code amendment, um, it's probably not going to help them out as much as we thought it would when we started this process, but I still think, um, you know, we spent about 30 minutes talking about it at the zoning commission. Still think it's a good idea to take it down to 25. Uh, so that's why we're bringing it out here to the, to the council tonight, just to go ahead and not have that item at, uh, commission be in vain and all that time, and, uh, think it'll still probably help somebody else down the road. So with that, that's, uh, that's where this code amendment came from, uh, that's, uh, the history on it. You got a little bit of background on this development. Hopefully you'll see in the pipeline soon, and happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Milan this evening on this particular agenda item? Yes, Counselor Alcaser.
I'm glad to hear. It just seemed like this was one of those, uh, would-be spot zoning cases, but it turned out not to be, but it may have to be, uh, later. But what I was wondering was, um, how much property would actually be affected by this particular ordinance if we pass it?
Every single property in the sustainability overlay district. You know, any, any property that, in the sustainability overlay district that abuts a residentially zoned property would be affected by this.
And how much is unbuilt as of this time?
Oh, it's a good question. Um, we've got, uh, the undeveloped property, we have this one. Uh, we have another property, a large tract just south of the old Dickies. Um, and, uh, you know, we've, we've just got a few, few small tracts. Like before the next council meeting, I can take a map and show you guys, um, bring back. And again, keep in mind, the S U P requirement, um, also applies to, say, you've got a existing property that wants to expand, um, add on. Um, they're, they're still going to have to, have to come through and, um, you know, potentially get S U P approval from you guys on that as well. So, I mean, this, that S U P requirement applies to any, any commercial development in the city that is backing up to a residential property.
Yeah, well, it looks like in this particular picture, just, you're, the property's practically sitting on the side. The five-foot, uh, building setback on each side is really narrow.
Yeah, you can have, um, you can have narrow setbacks on the side. I think the side requirements are zero, I believe. I'll confirm that for you guys. Um, the, the key thing is the, the, um, the rear setback, you know, because the intention is to make sure that residential properties are properly buffered.
If someone built it at zero, then some of the one next to it can build at zero?
I will double-check on that for, I have my zoning code in front of me, but I know the side setbacks are pretty, pretty minimal, if anything. Um, you know, if you build, and Chief could probably talk about it, you know, if you, you know, if you build on a, on a lot line, you know, you have to put a firewall in, um, you know, and so those, those requirements there. When you get in urban settings, a lot of times buildings are connected. You just have to have a firewall, um, there. That way, fire breaks out. You can't easily take out the, the building next to you. But, um, yeah, the, side, side building setbacks are pretty, pretty easy to, I, I don't think, present a complication for redeveloping properties throughout the city. It's mainly, you know, looking at the rear building setbacks and trying to make sure everything's fitting together well.
So the change that you're recommending is going with 25 instead of 30 feet, is that the only change in this?
That is the only change, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And I, and I recommended 25, not because I analyzed that, you know, exhaustively, but simply because the standard requirement of the B2 and the B3 and the requirement for years. And I would say, the setback that probably a lot of our commercial properties throughout the city are built to, since many of the buildings we had, or most of them were developed before we had the sustainability overlay, most of them are probably going to be 25. So I felt like, at least for this, 25 was safe. And like I said, even though we've kept working on this project and we've got more information and 25 probably won't help them out, 25 would have, would have helped them if the lines on that drawing were as accurate as, as I thought they were when I first started this process.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Counselor Bradshaw.
So you're saying that, um, this future proj, this project here that you're showing is on hold right now for other, for other reasons?
Right. It, it's on hold because of this. Um, not to get into too many details on this, but you see that line right there?
Right.
There used to be an alley here. This used to be a 20, uh, 25-foot alley that was owned and maintained by the city. And I think in the 80s, 70s or 80s, you know, alleys were pretty common throughout the 50s. I'm a big alley fan myself, um, as a planner, but 70s and 80s, you know, cities decided, I think, maybe trying to watch their, their, their costs, cities went through and started vacating alleys because it was, it cost money to maintain it. And so Leon Valley was no different, so we vacated that.
That moved this, the property line of the other, the residential?
Exactly.
So, okay, that makes sense.
We vacated, we vacated this alley, and when you vacate, um, it's, it's, you know, half of it is, uh, half of the alley. When you vacate, it just becomes private property.
Right.
Typically. Um, and, uh, and then it's up to the owners on either side to go and buy that. Well, in this case, the ordinance just vacated it and gave it to either side. I thought that they hadn't purchased their half yet and that that lot line was there. So I was thinking, okay, we've got 25 feet from here to here.
Right.
But I found out recently, the line is right there.
So is that the only thing that's holding this up right now? Was that, is that setback, or is there other issues?
They need to do some reconfiguration.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else from the council? Okay. Uh, at this time, which is, uh, 8:47, we open up the public hearing on this particular, uh, agenda item 8.2. Is there anyone in our chambers that would like to address this agenda item? Please come forward and state your name and where you live, and you have up to three minutes. minutes. Okay. Seeing no one, then we'll close the public hearing at 8:47. And again, this agenda item will be on the September 30th, 2019, city council meeting for a second read. All right. Moving then to agenda item number nine, citizens to be heard. Anyone in the chambers that would like to address the council at this time, please come forward. All right. Seeing no one, if there's no objection, then we move to adjourn at 8:47 on Tuesday, September 17th, 2019, and we stand adjourned.